We've raised three kids who all attended the Chesfield County Public Schools. As a member of the Covenant Presbyterian Church where I was a deacon, my wife and I led the church's youth group, believing that raising children was a joint effort among parents, church, and school. Nothing we do in life is harder than raising our kids. Maybe my wife and I were good, maybe we were lucky, or maybe both. But the oldest son is a chief engineer at Dominion Electrical Co-op here in Richmond. The second oldest son manages a mid-sized construction firm in Florida. And the youngest, the girl, works as an international financial analyst for IBM in New York. I'm here tonight, like many, because I have a renewed interest in education pre-K to 12. Years ago with three kids, I was probably a typical father. I did the usual elementary school things. I went to the hot dog supper. I did the opening night at the schools, and I joined a PTA. I think I actually went to a few meetings. So what changed back then for me? Well, one evening, the principal from Thomas Dale High School called our house. My oldest son was a sophomore there at Thomas Dale. My wife took the call and said, "Tom, Thomas Dale's on the phone. It's the principal." Well, you can only imagine what I thought. What has young Kevin done? What trouble is he in? Well, he was not in any trouble. And Mr. Sullivan, the principal, wanted my help in starting a PTA at his high school. Well, we met, I agreed, but I had no idea what I was getting into, none. People told me, "Be prepared, as a high school PTA president, to have a PTA meeting, and you are the only one there." That never happened, but the attendance at the high school PTA level is far different than the elementary school, as all of you know. So my involvement grew from there. I worked on a multimillion-dollar school bond referendum as part of a committee that advocated the passage of the school bond, the next school bond. I chaired that committee. Then I became president of the Chesfield County PTAs, which is a conglomerate of all of the representative from each of the PTAs across the county. One of the highlights while working with the school system came when the superintendent of Chesfield County Schools asked me to head a citizens group to pick core values for the school system. These core values are on display today in Chesfield County. Respect, responsibility, honesty, and accountability. Yes, I've been on the bench for a while, but you know, grandkids have an effect on it. It reminds you of how important our schools are and how critically important bringing up kids is. In closing, I believe it's important to teach kids how to think, not what to think, and that my experience and involvement with the school systems can bring new ideas and initiatives to New Kent County schools. So whoever you pick, I hope they will, as Dr. Nichols states, work hard, have fun, and make a difference. Thank you. I do have a petition that I'd like to leave with Miller. It's got 185 signatures on it. It's not the state Department of Elections petition. It's the neighbors that said, "We'd like you to serve." Eighty-five, ninety-five of them are from District 5, ninety are from outside of District. Thank you.
Members of the school board, Dr. Nichols, good evening. First, I would like to thank all of you for your service and dedication to our community. I know this is going to be a difficult year, and the decisions that have been made were done with careful consideration and extensive deliberation. Secondly, the reason this position is open weighs heavily on my heart. Dr. Harding Gale was an exceptional person and member of this board. Her service, her heart, her education, and love for New Kent County is part of my personal motivation for seeking her seat. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Debbie Allen. I've been a resident of the 5th District for the last 31 years, and educator of New Kent County for 35. I'm married to Ed Allen, who also served this county as athletic director from 1970 to 2012. And he also served as a Board of Supervisor member. I grew up in New England, went to the University of Maine where I earned a bachelor's degree. I am certified to teach general education pre-K 8 and special education K-12. In fact, I have taught every grade level except preschool, which I haven't ruled out doing in the future, especially with the new preschool initiatives. As a special educator, I have taught as a collaborative teacher, a subject-specific teacher, and within a self-contained classroom. For a number of years, I served as a head teacher in special education, as well as in 5th grade at GWES, and again later in 5th grade at New Kent Elementary School. For the last two years, I have been serving as a Title I teacher and just completed coursework from my master's in education as a reading specialist this past May. I was teaching, I tell you this to help you understand the depth of my experience, knowledge, versatility, and eagerness to continually grow while remaining an educator working directly with students. I was teaching before the DOE came up with standards of learning. I've seen the positive and negative impact of those, as well as other initiatives. I firmly believe that a strong fundamental base in reading and math at the K-2 level is important, and additional educational opportunities that build critical thinking skills, which will be not only highly sought, but necessary for the workplace. I understand where New Kent has been, how it has grown, and what it can be and what it should not be in the future. I believe the board would be well-served with my multi-layered perspectives. I have a personal interest in our schools as well. My own children graduated from New Kent in 2010 and 2013 and went on to pursue college degrees. I currently have student family members in each of the schools, ranging from 1st grade to 12th. I'm afforded a child's perspective, as well as their parents' perspective of our school system. I also have a 1st grade granddaughter in the Tennessee school system, a niece that works as a teacher in Texas, and a cousin that is a Vermont middle school educator. So while my own personal educational teaching experiences haven't gone beyond New Kent, I am not out of touch with educational practices, policies, and understanding of what goes on beyond New Kent. I believe this provides another insight and global perspective that can be useful to this board and ultimately to this county. Finally, I feel like my personality and character mesh well with the responsibilities of this position. I'm a hard-working individual with the ability to listen and then glean and glean important insights into people's viewpoints. I'm not afraid of conflict. In fact, I embrace conflict as a means by which to solve problems. If appointed, I will seek to understand the opinions, needs, and expectations of the citizens in the 5th District and represent those ideals. I will continue to seek the viewpoints of my fellow colleagues at each of the schools and represent their voices. I will be candid with my opinions, questions, and thoughts, but also receptive to others. But ultimately, I will always refer back to Mr. Ballmer, former New Kent primary principal's bottom line, which is, "We do what is best for the kids." Thank you for your time. Next up is Chris Schultz.
Thank everybody for being here, allowing me to be here. This has been a rough year for everybody. I don't think there's a person that breathes air that would breathe that. My name is Christopher Schultz. I'm a proud resident of New Kent County's 5th District. I've lived in Lenox for five years. I've lived in Portis Ford and Quentin. I've grown up, spent most of my childhood and adult life in New Kent. I graduated what is now the middle school in 1998. I went to kindergarten in the same building that my son went to last year. I'm somewhat nostalgic. I'm the proud father of three beautiful children, two of which are just of school age, one of which has got a few years to go. So that's part of my motivation for being here. My kids are just getting started. So I want to do everything that I can do to make sure that they get the best. And by proxy, everybody else's children will get the best too. I'm the proud husband of a beautiful and loving wife who last year learned how to be a homeschool teacher and a stay-at-home mom. If I had a hat, I'd take it off for her. What I've seen her go through the past year, raising children, teaching children, she hasn't had a break. I'm at work all day. I just, I gotta say, I wish she was here so she could hear this. She's gymnastics right now, three kids, and no reception, so she can't watch the Zoom meeting. But anybody that does hear this, just know how proud I am of her. Despite her best efforts, I feel like my kids have started to fall behind a little bit, particularly my youngest, my kindergartner, my six-year-old daughter. We're doing the best we can do. I've spent my career in healthcare. For 14 years, I've been a physician assistant with the Orthopedic Service in Gloucester at Wall Street Hospital. During my 14 years of healthcare, I've not just learned to practice medicine, I've had the the proud honor to be on various types of committees and subcommittees. We've made decisions at the local level with staffing in our office. We've made decisions throughout the health system. I've been involved in contract negotiations, employee retention programs. Completed a 15-month course in leadership training and development sponsored by Riverside. Most important thing that I have learned, part of with my career, but it all culminates together, being a husband and a father. Anybody that's been there, you make tough decisions. But in healthcare, I make tough decisions every day. Every single decision I make that affects somebody, there's a triple effect, a ripple effect. If I make a decision that affects a patient, it affects their loved ones. It may affect their employer. It may affect staff members. So what guides me when I make decisions outside of my medical training? My father and mother always told me, "No matter what you do, do what's in your heart and do the right thing, and you can never be wrong." And I'm motivated to help make tough decisions. I don't shy away from tough decisions. And I feel like I'm more than adept and capable and with my training and experiences to make these decisions. Now, 2020 was rough. There's light at the end of the tunnel, but we're not out of the woods yet. 2021, the latter part of the year, when the kids go back in the fall, that's gonna be really tough. We gotta make tough decisions. How do we get them in school five days a week, full-time, normal hours, safely and effectively? How do we identify the kids that have fallen through the cracks and fell behind? How do we get them up to speed quickly so that they can stay on course? I don't know the answer to questions yet, but they're gonna come up. And I'm willing to work with everybody in this room. I'm willing to work for the community, for District 5. I'm willing to do anything that I can do to make sure that my children have the best educational experience, have the best opportunity, and so that everybody in this room's children and everybody in District 5 and even New Kent County has the best opportunity and best educational experience. So regardless of what you take from my words, at the end of the day, if I am awarded the opportunity to do this, I will always do the right thing. I will always stand up for the people that I'm working for. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sandy Gaudier. I live in Barrensville. And unfortunately, Molly McBeath flew out of state this morning. She wanted to be here. She wanted to speak with you. So I'm gonna speak in her behalf. Molly and her husband have lived in District 5 off Title Water Drive for 15 years. And it's an interesting coincidence. They live on the same little road in the same little community that Gale and her husband lived in before Gale and Baxter built a beautiful retirement home. Molly and Molly's a graduate of Ohio State University. She majored in public relations and journalism. Her husband, Dr. George McBeath, just recently retired from a 30-year, 30-plus-year medical practice in Williamsburg. Molly's background is financial budgeting and management. She has a highly successful sales job where she does, she's the account manager, and she is in sales of medical devices and healthcare. She is a leader with a sales group and has been doing that for almost 30 years now. She has a motto that you saw in her resume that she gave to you, or I'm sorry, in her statement of purpose, that says, "Educating our children is one of the most important jobs we have." Both of her children attend the high school, graduating from Williamsburg Lafayette High School and Walsingham Academy. Both of those young women are now launched into their own careers. They've graduated from college. One has even given Molly a granddaughter. Molly would tell you if she was here that she comes from an academic family. Her mother was a teacher, a truant officer, a principal, and she retired as an assistant superintendent of Columbus, Ohio Public Schools. Molly's father was also an academic. He was a high school history teacher and coached football and track. I've known Molly for about six years now. She is a funny person. She's smart. She's collaborative. She doesn't take the lead when there's controversy, but she honest-to-God listens to everyone and then comes up with that little brilliant nugget that makes it all worthwhile. She will be an awesome, awesome school board member. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mark Daniel. What an honor and privilege it is to be here today to talk to you on behalf of my friend Tom Miller. Before we begin, I'd just like to say that I'm a father of six children who graduated, four of which have graduated from this school system and graduated from University of Virginia, Murray Baldwin College, Washington Lea Law School, United States Marine Corps. And we've got two more in school, and I just wanna tell you what a wonderful job I think that New Kent does. And I'm so proud to be a citizen and the work that you've done. It's also my pleasure to tell you about my friend Thomas Miller, because I didn't even know this, but in addition to his having a mechanical engineering degree and a master's degree in industrial engineering, Thomas got a history of achievement. Tom is not, well, they didn't tell you, but he's a retired decorated Army officer. And the times that I've had to interact with him, he's always shown the highest degree of professionalism and integrity. He has a history of achievement. You can go back and look at the things that he's been involved with. He's been an active volunteer, and not only does he have the will to do this, but he has the time. He's retired now, and again, he has a history of being involved in positive, good things in organizations. He is studious. He researches his issues. He is wise and has discernment. He is fair and gifted. He's not a yes man. He is a can-do man. I have served on civic groups with Tom, and Tom's always the one we go to when there's any controversy because he's so level-headed. First, he's gonna know all the issues, and then he's gonna come out and lay out the facts as fair as he can. And you couldn't pay him to be unfair. In fact, he's quick to take the side of the lesser person in an argument. I have so much respect for him, and I can't tell you. Like I say, he's not a yes man. He's a can-do man. He also has told me that he doesn't wish to be controversial. I think his intent is to serve for the rest of this term. And I've tried to talk to him. I said, "Tom, you're such a great candidate. You should sign up and do it for four years." Today, as we speak, I think it's been told to me that he just wants to serve for the period and not be a candidate in the fall. He would bring a unique perspective to this organization. In addition to his background in professionalism, his achievement, which you can readily see, his can-do and positive attitude, his problem-solving, I think I can think of no finer candidate to be a member of an organization. And his community is behind him, which is evidenced by those signatures. And I am too. I just think he is a wonderful candidate. And in addition to, I think we're fortunate to have more than one, because in the past, we've had trouble finding one in the field school. Tom would be a fine addition to you. He would bring a perspective. And I thank you for this opportunity to address this. Thanks so much.
I would like to thank everybody for speaking tonight. We are going to go back into closed session at the end of this meeting to figure out our next steps. And we will have another meeting on June the 7th, and we will be back in touch as to what will be next and if we have to make another meeting sometime between then and June 14th. But it is our intent to appoint somebody by June 14th. And there will be a special election will be held in November, as a couple of candidates did mention, and the elected official will take over on January 1st.
Yes, chair members of the board. Miss Hall and I have worked on our series of meetings for that school year, taking into account the various factors around school holidays, Board of Supervisor meetings, and so forth. So this is coming to you as the first read, you know, all the dates that we have lined up for next school year. If you would like to see a shift or we need to look at other dates along the way, we can certainly do that. You've been very flexible as we've had to shift. Tonight is a great example. We originally scheduled for yesterday and we shifted it today. We will continue to do that throughout the year, we do too. But we really tried to match this up with the calendar with the needs of the school division and hearing the work of it. So I'd be happy to answer any questions at this point in time, but this is first read. Come back in a second.
Do we know right now if there's any conflicts with Board of Supervisor meetings? They might not have all their dates, right?
Right now, our best read is that we have
Up until the end of this year, we don't have any conflicting dates.
Okay. All right. You're good. Thank you.
Ms. Madam Chair, board members, and Mr. Paul is gonna come up too. He has the next item. Request for $30,000 for appropriate marciip contingency. Back area rooftop makeup area fails, and this is a solid research replacement unit, which would be about $130,000. So in lieu of that, we found a main work here for $30,000, which is what we're cutting to do tonight.
This is a good example of using our year-end funds that we transfer into CIP. Just another example of a project, unanticipated expense with an HVAC failure that we can utilize year-end funding to transfer, similar to the base one that we did last month. This is really just great track, please.
A lot of our HVAC is being replaced because they were due to be replaced with our
That's a middle school.
The middle school, the high school is much newer. So
The high school over here was in '08. The ones over there are from '88. Yeah, they're being replaced. We're doing those that we send to upper level, complete upper level, and some of the larger ones over there. Over here, this is a makeup area unit. Basically, what it does is pumps a lot more fresh air in and it kind of conditions it as it comes in. It's a, the units we have over here are very high-end units. And basically, the heat exchanger needs a water source, so the water cools instead of air. And the heat exchanger itself is what went bad. Plated that went bad and allowed water through refrigeration section. What we're hoping to do is just be able to rebuild that. Like I said, I just looked at just a couple of models that were similar to it, and just the units one were $130,000. That's without anything, taking it off, doing, you know, I'm saying, without doing anything else. And you have, in this building here, we have probably 15 of them.
So that's the larger worry, and I'm gonna oversimplify it. Like when you stop more light bulbs and one of them goes out, you know the other three are gonna go. So with this part going out on this June, and we're worried about it happening.
So that's why I'm thinking, we're not leaving any CARES Act money on the table, are we?
We will not. But it's still, even if we have the money there, this is a better replacement process.
Right now, we wanna try to fix it. Once we get inside, and I'll stop it when I have to stop it. Once I get inside and see what damage we got, then, I mean, I may, if we're able to keep going forward, and I feel like we can repair it at that cost, we will, and then, you know, I get in there, we find something else, and I will come back.
Good strategy. Full business. Next is construction.
I believe we have a little bit of a slideshow for you. On the progress of the new school. And we've promised throughout this process to run a very transparent process, which includes monthly construction meetings with the partners of the county, Tim's bi-weekly construction meetings, and then also every work session, we will provide a construction update for you. So a lot has happened since our last work session. And then we'll also schedule, I'm saying this without Tim knowing I'm saying it, but we'll also schedule time for you to be on site with us in the near future, kind of showing the layout. Hard hats and everything.
All right, I'm gonna start out just kind of walking you through what you're looking at there. This is the actual route where we come from entrances. And me and Mr. Nichols has talked about this before, your elevation grades. What you're seeing to the left is on the other side of us there. That will be their elevation as of now. You see the storm systems You, you see the storm systems down through here. That's going to be our, I mean, of course it'd be asphalt and everything, but this will be our grade. So you'll have the difference from here to here. Uh from when we first until they do something on their side. So it's a large amount on that. Uh you can go to the next one and look through them real quick and I'll try to, uh we, we started this week. Uh this is the slabs for the gym and the cafeteria report this week and the uh little storage room that's in between it there to your left. That's the cafeteria on the other side is the gym side here.
So what you're looking at in the middle starts to.
That's your stage.
Is the stage. So you remember we have a stage of your performances on the cafeteria side or the gym side depending. So that amount of dirt you see in the middle is, is where the stage will be. So I know you guys have seen a lot of drawings and a lot of renderings. It's kind of cool to see it start to come together.
That gives you a little better view of that. You also have to your left, uh the left-hand side of your gang bathrooms. And that's your storage area in between these, uh the, this is from the cafeteria side looking the other way toward the gym. Just to give you an idea of how it is going to come out. This is where we're starting, starting right now, putting the water lines uh for our little delay we have with the long-eared bat thing. We're bringing the water lines up through the property now and, and we'll bring them from the uh. From up the trade lines, started that in, they've started at that end and now they're doing it up through the property here. So trying to get everything we can in place until we have time back in September to come through the wetland there.
So just for publicly for the board, uh from April fifteenth to September fifteenth. Yes, um due to environmental factors and the migration habits of the long-eared bat, which you listed. We are unable to do certain things around the site. So we're working around that piece, but uh fortunately a lot of the work we needed to do uh was already done at that point. When did we learn about this? That would be on April twenty-second and we were already in the, um the long-eared bat. So cute creature, potential mascot. I don't know, we'll see.
That's going to go over well. What's your nickname over the bats?
Long-eared bat.
Long-eared, the long-eared bat.
Oh, they do.
That's a small long-eared bat. That'll break every hip along the. So tall kids long-eared bat. And we're getting one for shake to the.
Yep, okay.
What I have here, guys, is everybody gets to see what we've been and all the fun stuff with it. It's our first change order. Uh and I mean, this is the beginning of it. This is the other part. It's got. As I'm walking, I'm just going to talk at the same time. The Dominion Power is one of our biggest change order we have on this right here, what you're looking at. This is where the new kitchen has an ordinance where the power lines that were existing, everything coming in new has to be underground. So we had to pay to remove the existing service that was coming across the property, re-fee to the houses on the other side. And feed our new development, our new school. So you can take just a minute if you want to glance at some of this and I'll just kind of go through it. Uh what I gave you on the second page is all the Dominion stuff given, you know, for the, I'll, I'll start at the top. Let's just go from there. The, the kitchen change order you see there is a minor change order for electrical for where the actual equipment when it came in, came in at different amperages. And they left out for the uh evaporation, uh the freezer evaporator, cool heaters tape for that. And they left out, they just got the size wrong on the, from a twenty-two or thirty. So that's a minor change on the. And on the next one you had was a, it's a minor change on that too. That is. On the door ratings for the, for the glass doors on that, there's special cores on that. And that was due to where we removed the uh annex gym. So that had changed for that reason. And we had in there a couple of days for delays, which we're no longer behind. We're actually six days ahead. So there's no more delays. We got out of January, February, all that fun stuff. And now we're back on time. You have, when we get down to the, the last one there, we see. The forty-nine thousand, the big change order on that. If you look at that real well, we also used a site allowance that we had already into contract with Hartland to take. And be able to use fifty-one thousand of that for in cost two on top of for moving, putting in the one inch, six inch line. The one six inch line and the two swing lines through the site. The next one was the March weather delay. Next one for the thirty-seven thousand, that was for material and the cost for Dominion Power to actually pull the new services through the property. And redo the uh single-phase service that was existing.
So the Dominion is out. This is the general contractors.
Porsha.
And this is the, this is a separate.
Yes.
So they're two separate.
Yes, and what I got there, this is already a C I P thing. This goes into our contract, which you see on the back two pages are on purchase orders that we will have to pay out of our contingency funds.
Um so uh even though we're up to, up, up to date on the schedule, we have contract, given them a contractual extension of six days.
Contractual, we, we have hit, we have done that, yes. Uh and as we're ahead right now, you know, that works out. What we've done is get a contractual difference on this. We had built-in days already, so it's starting to balance out. We had weather days on this month, which we haven't had to use. So that's why I'm back saying that we're at zero on that and six days ahead of schedule.
But if we, but if they, so but uh with us giving, allowing, allowing the additional six days. Our completion date could potentially be pushed out.
Sure.
Six days and we're still, we're still good with that, that date and our ability to get around the first rule.
One of the things you'll likely see us do, not forecasting it for next year, but we'll, we'll likely stay with a post-legged a calendar one year longer. Uh just, it gives us two weeks with the uh new school. So that, that buys us a little bit of time too. Hopefully we don't need it. We have more breathing room. Uh but that's likely the strategy that we'll.
I think they might have enforced before on which. Opening up. Uh we've done this before. It's a little different.
So how much did we have in our site allowance?
And she's got different categories. If you look on there, you'll see the different allowances to different, uh you got like one, two. And I mean, there's a full list of them in our agreement of different types. This is just on this one. Uh I think this one came out of. Sorry, lounge. I would have to give you the sheet with all the allowances. There is all the other like twelve allowances.
So when we do get something from the contractor, from Hartland, uh we look to the site allowance first.
Right.
Uh and we push into the site allowance, which we've done uh several times, several times.
My concern is how, what percentage of that um site allowance does this need up?
As of right now, I'd have to give you the numbers, but I mean, hey, you, you're not here what's in.
That's what I'm.
The site allowances are generous site allowances.
Yeah, I was saying sorry, yes.
So Tim, coming out of contingency, like with change orders, like what, what's the net?
I don't have the exact number. I do have these, the two ones on the back for Dominion Power at this time. But we're also going to have, you have that plus the forty-nine that is, that's a bit handy. You can answer that better where that would be paid out of. The forty-nine would be paid out of, I guess, straight contract right now until we get towards further into it, correct?
Well, I'm sorry, and what's the forty-seven? Forty-nine is the, it looks like you're, you're using allowance number three, is that right?
Allowance number three is the fifty-one thousand. Yeah, the fifty-one thousand, when you look at that, this is what we're going to, on top of that fifty-one thousand coming out of the allowance. So we would have. The forty-nine thirty-one would be the actual. One for that. So we have to.
So I'm just, I'm a quick permission or understanding. The forty, the forty-nine thirty-one.
Is going to be.
Is total.
Is total. If you look on the sheet or right up your cover sheet right above, right there where it says new contract sum including change orders will be. And it says fifty-three, eight, eight, two, huh? That's your change order right there.
But that's exclusive of the.
Contract.
Yes, but the thirty-seven, two, two, five from Dominion Power, that's a separate influence.
That's a total separate issue. That's why I have it laid out with a P O and that will come later. I do not have the invoices right now. For the first change order is what you see is the fifty-three.
Yep.
But I just wanted, since it was all coming together, then I wanted y'all to see what else was going to be involved in this.
But did you not, or I guess this is a broader question, but with uh with Mosley, did they not contact Dominion Power before they?
This was not included in the electrical drawings on the stuff.
It should have been included. I mean, since the overhead lines were already existing.
So it's not, it's not a Dominion, it's not a Dominion requirements, a U Kent requirement.
Okay.
So it's a, a county ordinance that requires it to be buried as opposed to overhead.
And that, that part was also in our site. I will say that. It was left out of our electrical. It was actually in the site saying that everything had to be utility-wise underground, but it was not in the electrical. So that's where the piping would have been put in through the electrical in the, in the contract.
Okay, so it was just locked off the electrical drawings. Yes, it was. It's left off the site drawings and electrical.
So yes, Mosley should.
Yes, they should have caught that. Yes.
We missed out the ground part. It looks like it's based on this.
It's pretty about sixteen inches out of ground like that.
In one section, it's about sixteen inches out of the ground. I mean, we're, the project is doing well, guys. We're, we're doing well. And, and, and like I tell, I, I talk to Mr. Nichols about this before, everybody starts. I am so happy. It's not like it was in March and February and January. We're, it's moving well. We, the, the other stuff we haven't seen yet, we're making a lot of this up already on stuff that will be credited back to us. So we'll get that on your next one. I didn't want to confuse you by bringing it before it's here, but their job is running very well.
Yeah, Tim and I and Tim are working through credits as well, you know, as we go through, just to give you an example of a, a roll-up gate we were going to have. Uh that when we went back to the instructional team and, and Tim, we're not going to need that roll-up gate. That's a significant savings. Uh because the wings locked down, so you don't need a roll-up gate in addition to that. Uh that came in around fifteen dollars for that one. Uh so we have several pieces like that to show you next time, to show you credits as well.
We have credits coming back right there and it brings, coming all together around, right around sixty dollars. So we're, we're trying to make it balance.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next step is touchable downshifts of staff individuals.
Yes, uh so this is a second read for biology textbooks uh being recommended for adoption. It is Miller Levine Biology twenty-twenty-one. An overview of the textbooks and curriculum have been in our, on our website and we had a review and feedback submission. Connected to it as well, since the first reading at on May third. Uh today, we've received no feedback on that feedback form. And we're requesting board approval to adopt the recommended biology textbooks. So this is second read uh for biology.
Divisions to recommended operating budget for redundancy.
Alright, this is Morgan. I will tag team this update. If you haven't answered any questions. Uh this is probably the sixth, seventh or eighth time we've been doing a budget presentation for you. Uh so we wanted to bring you up to speed on the recommended budget and actually ask you to adopt it this evening. The adoption of it this evening will allow us to move forward with contracts or the approval. Sorry. I got the, maybe I knew you were wrong. Hey, where the approvals will come back and adopt after the county adopts. Yes, later on this month, so.
So we'll start with just where we left off um on the first slide. Ross, it's the uh recommended operating budget that we presented on March fifteenth. We just wanted to show that that was our recommended budget at the time and we have had a lot of updates since then. But we just wanted to take you from there to what we're asking you to change with that document. So on the next slide, we are going to look at some of the recommendations that we presented to you on April twelfth. That we are formally bringing forward for approval. This includes the additional fed teacher that we discussed for seventy-two thousand six hundred thirty-two dollars for the new elementary school. We also discussed increasing our budget at A D M to thirty-three hundred, which is an additional two hundred fifty-six thousand four hundred forty-one dollars in state revenue. We had a presentation on May third um from Matt Davis with McGriff Insurance. And he presented a um, a package that included an increase for our employer share um to also. Not pass any of those increases on to our employees, which is great. We are recommending that we approve that. On our March fifteenth update, we did provide to you that we had three hundred and seventy thousand fifty-four dollars available as a balance for the additional state revenue that we received. And that was to meet five percent average. And if you remember at that, at that meeting, we presented that we would give everybody a three percent. And strive to really work towards that five percent average goal. So we're applying that to that. We are um also had a great meeting with D O E regarding our B P I funding. We feel confident that we can fund two positions for B P I for next year. Which means we're able to save on one of our um regular E C S C positions, which you'll see down at the bottom there, because we're going to ship that funding number. Some other positions that we've reduced to work towards meeting the five percent salary adjustment goal. Is we're reducing two new positions that we asked for for the high school, specialized position and the English position. And we're also looking at elementary par, par position for thirty-three point fifty, along with that E C S E position. Does anyone have some questions?
So one of the nice things about uh our preschool expansion project and continuing with the new elementary schools. We weren't able to access Virginia preschool initiative budget upon uh existing or to fund an additional teacher and um. I don't want to use the, the, the.
Funding position.
The, the position that was existing. So that, that was a significant savings that would have been uh just an operator case, so.
Yeah, we did have a little bit of concern about that and we had a um, a meeting with someone at D O E that confirmed that we were able to do that. So we're very excited to be able to report with our plan to expand preschool and hopefully um really utilize most of the slots that are available.
So if, so you anticipate insurance flatline, basically no increase?
No, there will be an increase to our healthcare premiums. We'll just have to find that through the employer share. Um so it's about a, it ends up being about a seven percent increase overall on the employer term. Um and zero percent for the employee. So as far as our rates, our, our rates for our employee will stay the same. And what we pay is the employer will be increased. So we won't feel that as a deduction. Struggle within the past is like we give a raise, but then we raise the.
Yeah, we raise it more than what they're raising.
Yes, we wanted to do the raise and really push into teacher compensation and whole healthcare uh costs.
And so you almost cover to a degree by when you reduce that for the extra, what, whatever the extra difference is from the reduced savings.
For the healthcare increase.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So what I actually looked at, uh Mr. Mead, was the new positions that we had. Uh we do include a healthcare employee plus spouse budgeted for each of our new positions. And we were looking at reductions to try to balance our budget. We looked at that and it was um. I was going to cut that originally, but I did not. I left that in because that's about the same increases that I could do for seven percent. So that's why I added that change um there because of. So that's why I added that change, um, there because I felt comfortable with what we already included in the budget. So with, with all of those changes and you have seen the next slide, um, in a prior, um, presentation, but this is really ultimately what we're striving to do and we're asking your approval for this evening. Basically, um, all eligible employees receive at least a three percent pay increase. And our teachers are starting salary scale for our bachelors and masters, and really would be about a four percent increase base.
That's across the board, right?
At the beginning.
Okay.
Starting salary, because it fixes decompression. And then what we'll do, um, on their scale is you'll see there, there'll be a range of an adjustment, three to nine percent for all teachers.
And where the adjustment is the greatest is the band of groups of teachers where they missed step increases and raises, uh, during those times. It's tip eleven, twelve in those steps, uh. So we'll be able to keep some, hopefully keep and retain.
Yeah, it really helps with the decompression of the scale. Um, it helps, you know, our example when we presented this was, you know, a twelve-year teacher, um, comparing them to a starting teacher and it really stretches that scale out. So that's what that does for us. And we do feel, um, good about a four percent increase at the starting salary. That's the slide we normally give you with starting salaries in the region. You'll probably be hearing a lot about people doing, you know, a flat five percent. We feel like this will make us a little bit more competitive from divisions that are doing that. So we're hopeful that our masters, especially our masters teacher's starting salary will be, you know, in a competitive range. We also talked about some of our minimum wage adjustments that we're making. Um, you know, that is a change. It's coming January one, so we're trying to just plan for that. So we're not trying to play catch-up next year.
Cut the, on. Did that affect anything that we're doing right now with the minimum wage? It went up today. It's a nine fifty an hour.
It did, nine fifty, uh, but we did not have any employees that we had to modify.
Then what is it gonna go to in January?
Eleven dollars.
Eleven dollars. And then it holds there till?
I believe it's a dollar a year.
Yeah, a dollar a year to twenty-twenty-five, where we're at fifteen or something like that.
So, so you'll see that pattern from us and teacher budgets, try, try to be ahead of it and not having to do a major adjustment at, at one time. But when, when we do, so for example, on the bus A piece, when we do that minimum wage adjustment, we can't just do that there. We have to run that through that group.
So that's a disaster in the community right now because we just had a huge adjustment at the, at our childcare center. It was just. I mean, what are you gonna do?
Because if we just push people up to eleven, then we create compression all over again.
Yeah, then there's people who say, I just got a two dollar an hour. But I've been here for four years and I'm like, it's not a money, the, the person that just started.
Which is, which is why we've gone with a different approach. You will see other school divisions going, we're doing a flat five or a flat four. Everybody gets, it fixes nothing. It just creates more compression. So been a lot more surgical with, uh, with Hanes and her team's leadership to really put together a smart plan that, uh, does move salaries forward, but also attacks, uh, compression. We're not done, but.
Right, a good example, the par professionals, you'll see we're doing a four and a half percent. So they are not receiving a flat three. Um, and that is a lot to what you're speaking about, looking at those scales and trying to move everything systematically, not just saying, let's just make everybody this base. Um, so there's still a lot of work that we need to do on our scales and I know that we'll do it together, but we feel really good about what we're doing here, especially for teachers. So with that being said, really this is just a visual, um, to show you the changes. You'll see in the top box, that's general fund only. That's our recommended budget for March fifteenth, and you'll see the changes that we've made to that include the state revenue increase of two fifty-six, four forty-one. And then over on the right, you'll notice that I've reduced our county operating funds from the four hundred fifty thousand request down to two fifty, which is what's currently being, um, advertised in the county's budget. And I've also included formerly the additional request of the seventy-two thousand six thirty-two. And then just the bottom really is all funds. So you'll see the general fund pick up to thirty-five million seven oh seven, seven sixty, um, with the total approved budget, or tonight for your approval, thirty-eight million six sixty-six point nine six.
Now, the county could come at their next meeting and move to two fifty to four fifty. So for the purposes of tonight, uh, we have to stick with the number that is, is public. That would allow us greater flexibility in terms of our A D M and the number that we utilize with that and provide us greater flexibility for some of those positions that allow us to do some additional class size potential adjustments. Uh, so that money, while we have to approve now with two fifty, that money is still very much necessary for us to do the work we need to do. Uh, but in the interest of contracts, we have to make some significant cuts to be able to move the salary compensation piece forward, uh, with the hopes and continue with the push for that additional two hundred thousand in revenue. So while that's there, we continue to, and Mr. Hathaway and I had conversations about that again this morning as part of our month. So we'll continue working on that piece. If we are able to secure more funds from the county, we'll come back to you, um, at that time with, with that adjustment. Uh, we, we do have a plan for that and it would be extremely beneficial to us. We're gonna be running a very tight, uh, year next year with a lot of unknowns. Uh, it would provide that additional cost. Like those cuts you saw, personnel watches, for example, are things that we would really like to have and would be beneficial. So it, it would allow us to tax some of those things. So I just wanted to dive into that for a second because we're seeing that piece. So, Andy, I'm gonna do, and I have anything?
I guess my question is, if we're, right now, what we're approving is the additional two hundred fifty thousand, but we're really, what we're really asking for me is the four hundred fifty.
Correct.
But we're not asking for that. What's, what's the, what's?
We're still asking for it, but the county has only publicly said two fifty, so we can't put in a number that they haven't committed to.
Okay.
Um, and the way this process works, and Mr. Hathaway and I had a lot of conversation about this process today too, is we sort of have to go first on this because we're a subset of their budget, uh, but they could come back at their meeting.
And maybe next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
So it'd be our goal to, you know, once they have that conversation and at their last meeting, they did discuss their current contingency, I think it was six eighty-eight or something. Um, and, and that they're in further conversation around. So if something were to move on that next week, then we would, um, come back. When we will formally come back to adopt our budget, what we would do most likely is just send in the approved version of our budget before we adopt it.
Oh. Uh, I have one other question and I think, so where, so where do we sit in terms of school divisions in the state of Virginia now in terms of our funding per pupil? Those, or any other metric that?
I can, I do have, I think I have that information as far, but I can, um, email you all our table fifteen information, which, um, ranks it. And I think in the past, that's ranked in different ways for you, you know, state, all funds, local funds. Um, so we can certainly review that. If that's something that you guys would like to kind of see. With the, we're, we're towards the bottom as far as, um, per people amount for total expenditures, all funds. Uh, and, you know, people look at that different ways and either you're being really efficient with less money or you're not funded enough to do the things that you need to do. So, um, that's something we can definitely get, get to.
To me, it, it seems like that's something that we should still keep somewhat in the forefront because, because the U T N V operate fairly well. So I think it's important for the community to know that.
One thing I will say in the past, part of the reason why we've been low is because our federal funding is so low based on, um, different requirements to get different grants. Um, so hopefully the, this, well, the state B P I funding, um, will help with additional state revenue. Um, locally, we're usually in, looking at fifty and sixty mark, um, which is somewhere kind of in the middle. Um, so, you know, we like always do that, do a little bit higher, but that's, you know, about average. Um, so maybe we'll see some of those things shifting.
So does that have to do with, because we're just a county that is growing quickly and our per capita income for families is pretty high for our population? So then we don't qualify basically because we're not in the lower subset of rural communities where most families have an income that support a lifestyle versus a lot of rural camp, families don't have an income. So then because we're on the upper end, we don't qualify very much.
Yeah, or sometimes there's, um, requirements that you have to have a certain percentage of free and reduced students in your division, even if they're certain types of parents. It will, I think, will get interesting. Now, all of a sudden, sorry, we have free, free breakfast and lunch. Um, so oftentimes, folks may not even apply for those benefits, which we would always encourage them to use to apply because there might be other benefits on that you would receive, you know, locally, uh, for, for being in that category. But I think that will be interesting to see kind of how that shakes out over the next few years. Um, because I think there might be families that aren't applying for those things with, with what we're receiving now. So we certainly would encourage.
But our free reduced rate on the typical year is, is low in comparison.
Well, but you know, now that they've changed all these thresholds, these income thresholds for tax child, you know, child tax credits and things like that, it'll be interesting if they will start raising the threshold for income qualifications for free and reduced lunch. Because some of that's gonna have to do with the B P I thing as well, I think, because you'll be buying a lot of breakfast and lunches for that, for that group all the same.
And there are a lot of unknowns with income right now for families because, uh, we are doing free breakfast and lunch for all and we'll continue that next year. Uh, so where we truly stand as far as free reduced lunch is a little bit of a, a mystery right now.
Yeah.
Because we know families, uh, you know, have suffered through the pandemic, we know families that both, parents have lost jobs. So we know a lot of those factors have changed, but I don't think any school division has a real good read on it yet. I will tell you from a federal standpoint, there are grants that we would apply for and we think we could utilize, uh, this more having, I looked at one this week, that, uh, you had to be at least, if you were at least fifty percent free and reduced lunch, you would get twenty points towards a hundred on the application. We lose twenty points on, you know, we're down to a C already. We're at technically the B on a ten-point scale, but so it, it makes us less competitive even going after some of these grants. So.
And unfortunately, with all of these, um, our S R funds, you know, we are going to continue to be as creative and forward-thinking as possible. Um, we are gonna have committees and folks that we're gonna bring together to talk about spending those funds. Um, we're gonna probably bring some things to you in the upcoming meeting about that. Um, there's a lot of information coming out very quickly about the S R three funds. It is exciting and very frustrating at the same time because, you know, they're having, you know, four webinars this week and telling you that these things are due next week and we get, you know, but they still don't have guidelines. You know, we're waiting for this, but this is kind of what we think and, it just makes it really difficult to kind of do the work that we need to do, but we're doing our very best to be forward-thinking in this. I think that will be the theme for next year. You'll see a lot of communication around those funds, how we're using them. There will be a lot of transparency around that. Um, I think the C R F funds, a little less so because we were so quick to have to spend those so quickly. Um, certainly, you know, we have that information, but I think these funds, we have more years to spend. I think there's gonna be a lot more of these coming together and talking about.
There's also public facing portion of this to give feedback for that as a community because it is, as Andy said, a longer timeframe for this. And larger settlement.
And then just tonight, um, you all did approve a recommendation for a capital improvement plan in November. The only change to that is we did increase our transfer for, uh, the digital conversion from one hundred thousand to two hundred, which is reflected in this. So we're just asking for approval on both of those budgets this evening.
And this total is reflected in the county's budget as well.
And really, it's just our mixed ups. We'll hopefully have a group of these meeting. We'll have a meeting next week with the board supervisors to hear what, what they adopt and then we will come back at our June seventh meeting with any improvements to our budget.
With, with the release of this last funding with the general assembly coming out and saying, hey, we have five hundred more million dollars than we had anticipated. Do we believe, and then with the other, I guess, CARES Act funding that the state is getting, the four point three billion or whatever, do you see that trickling down to the school divisions?
I think there's a lot of opportunity and part of it is the S R two set aside, which we're meeting on tomorrow. I mean, that's one of the ones that's a quick turnaround. That's specifically for, um, instruction. Um, the first set of set asides that we applied for and received, there was a lot of, um, you know, P P E, there was a little bit of opportunity for school nutrition. I believe there was some special education, some technology. The S R two set aside grants more geared towards instructional learning, things like tutoring, after school, things of that nature. And I think with the S R three funding, um, that's the first set of funds where it's actually a requirement. And that, that's really the bucket that we're looking at and a little bit of S R two for, uh, A check and C I P type repairs and things of that nature. We're waiting to see if they're gonna approve. Always have asked basically, can we go to school with this money? You know, some of these divisions are getting really large sums of money. Um, so that's yet to be determined. That's part of what we're waiting on.
There's the school divisions not too far from us that are getting over a hundred million dollars and a couple of other schools without it, not really a high school or, uh, so some of this money is, you know, we're at one point A, we're very thankful for that.
I do feel like that.
Well, the big calculation, you know, that happens is because you're a, you're a city within a county and now you, you, that like the, like Ashland and the city of Richmond, some of those people have to double dip because if you're a city designation within a county, you almost have doubling the amount of funds.
And, and one thing like with Tim's transfer this evening, you know, we'll, we'll continue to investigate, can we assess our funding for something like that? We're a little bit tied right now because they have a guideline that you have to spend your S R one funds before you dip into your S R two. So after we get past June thirty, I feel really good about moving forward with all of those funds. Um, but things like that would be potentially, you know, things that weren't budgeted before and then it happened that we really have to talk about, um, that would help in the pandemic, you know, especially care quality. Those types of things, we would have to amend our grant and then ask for.
One of the things we're gonna have more conversation about with each of these grants, the prize, a great deal of grant management. Um, so no matter how small the grant is or how large the grant is, there's still a lot to it. Uh, that, you know, we, we may come back to the board using some of these funds and ask for a grant funded, grant manager of some sort. We're still pulling on the same three people.
What is wrong still?
What's that?
What is wrong still?
Well. In addition to our federal programs, our title one, two through six, you know, we have those as well. We're, we're gonna work through it internally before we go. But it does put an additional strain, um, on the system with this and, and potentially Ross.
That's why you're a new assistant superintendent. Tell him to step up to the plate, right? Exactly. You can take your leave, John, next week.
All right, I'm gonna seem to have to get this meeting, uh, on track here. Does anybody else have any, uh, any other questions on the budget?
We'll keep you updated as things shift, because where we stand, this would allow us to, all the contracts for a course.
All right, we're gonna move into action items. Do I hear a motion to approve the personnel notice as presented?
I make a motion to approve the personnel items as presented.
Second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I hear a motion to approve the C I P transfer request as presented?
I'm gonna approve the C I P transfer request as presented.
Second.
I second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Do I hear a motion to approve the biology textbook adoption request as presented?
I move that we approve the biology textbook addition request as presented.
Second. Second?
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
And do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommended operating budget and recommended CIP F Y twenty-one twenty-two as presented?
I make a motion, we approve the superintendent's recommended operating budget and recommended CIP twenty-one twenty-two.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
I call for a motion to go back into closed session. I move that we go back into closed session. Second?
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.